All right, don't forget to silence your gadgets, he said. And if you have anything for us, it goes to Mr. Curran. Okay. We'll begin with the invocation and the pledge done respectively by Masters Majerik and Harrison. If you wish to join us on either or both, please rise.
... gather for this meeting, seeking your guidance and wisdom. Goodness, open hearts and open minds as we come together to discuss the important matters. Help us listen to one another, respecting diverse ideas and in an atmosphere of unity and cooperation. Father, help us to find creative solutions and make choices that are just beneficial for all involved. As we begin this meeting, we surrender our plans and agendas to you. We trust that you will lead us in the right direction and guide us toward wonderful outcomes. In your holy name, Lord, we pray, amen.
Please join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Usually that's the first thing I read, and I didn't read it. And I'm like, oops.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bell.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Freeling.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Pinkelman. Majerik.
Here.
Here.
Pitchford.
Here.
Ballrath.
Here.
Werfel.
Here.
Yarborough. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 11 present, one absent.
Thank you. The minutes from the 12th, be approved, is the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Majerik, supported by Bell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, we have communications.
Yes, you received four resolutions. The first one is from Livingston County. They established a Livingston County Health Advisory Committee, Board of Commissioners, received on October 12th. Resolution from Sheboygan County Board of Commissioners opposing any legislating preempting local control for solar and wind development, received on October 12th. A resolution from Ottawa County respects the individual freedoms and parental rights of the people of Ottawa County to make choices regarding childhood vaccines, received on October 12th. A resolution from Lenawee County, supporting local control of land use, received on October 13th. That's all for communications.
Thank you. Public comments about the resolutions on the agenda, there are no added resolutions, insofar as I'm aware. If you have anything to say about the resolutions, now is the time. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. No one has requested that any resolution be pulled. Is there a motion to approve? The consent calendar is submitted. Moved by Harrison, supported by Pitchford. Discussion. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Curran.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Ah.
Yes.
Pitchford.
Yes.
Ballrath.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 11 ayes.
Thank you. Madam Chair of Finance, would you like to lead off on the committee report?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Our administrator came in to visit with us. Our chairperson came in to visit with us, and I thank you all for doing the things that we wonder about. You know, I sometimes put your attorney hat on, you know, so that we can do things well, and we have good questions. I'd like to let you know our information systems. Chris Swayhard came and talked with us, and he had a very interesting sheet for us. This is something we do each year, and it's a two-year agreement, but it's with the taxes for Marion County. And what Chris told us is that Marion County does the majority of the taxes for our communities. And what it is, it's through B, S, N, and A. They're the supplier of the forms and of the numbers and all kinds of things, how they work together. And so Marion County has a list of all the communities, our township, cities, villages. And on this paper that he gave us is the 2023 rate for each community. And there is a 5% increase, and so the 2024 rate. And so what Marion County will do with communities that need it is print out their amounts and send it to them. And along with that, there is a letter that comes from that department. It's an agreement between the units of Marion County and the city is named on it. And also, there is a resolution that will come to us next Thursday, October 26th, for us to approve and to vote to do this, taxing that we do. And I'm just trying to see if that... It's a two-year agreement, but the amount changes annually. And sometimes, well, it changes annually. Then the next thing that we did, Community Development Director Dan Fetti came in, and there will be resolutions, one for the Harbor Shores Memorandum of Understanding, and then the other one for the resolution to apply for CDBG housing grant. And should we receive that, we're requesting $400,000. $200 will be used for demolition of any tax-foreclosed properties that still have buildings on them. And the other $200,000 will be used for rehab to a certain area, and these dollars would come from MISTHA. We had very interesting meeting. We had some bids and we had waivers. One of the waiver we had, let me see if I see it here. Give me a second. Was it for some boost? It was something to make the salt work better on the roads. They believe that it's going to snow. And so people are trying to get, I want to read down here. Our different departments are trying to be prepared and get ready for that. And what this waiver is, is it was for North County. This is the Boost Liquid to help accelerate the activation of the salt product and the rental of a tank from South County Great Lakes to be used to distribute it with. And we agreed to that. And then we had some bids, and we've been getting bid result, I'm sorry, the bid sheet, and it says zero bidders, and then it says two responded or three responded. And so we were wondering, with zero bidders, how are you getting responses? A wonderful group, thank you Administrator, just had Robert Ray, was it Don Trail? And...
Daniel.
Bianoki.
Bakioke.
Bakioke. That came in and talked with us, answered any questions we had, and what, Bakinoke?
Bakioke.
Bakioke.
There you go.
Explained to us, because I want to say his name right, because I like my name to be said right, so I want to do it right. He explained to us that Marion County has an area for bids, and it's advertised on that site. And then we are members of the Builders Exchange, where all jobs that come are put there. And with his company, and that's what his job is, is to get bids for us, the best ones, and da-da-da-da-da. They also get in touch with people that they know that does that kind of work. Sometimes when we put a bid out, the work is so big, smaller companies are not able to do it. And so they work all the things that they know, and that's the advantage and the reason that we have this company working with us, because we have so many things that need to be done, and so many need to be done before it snows, or, you know, all of that. So know that they're well put out there where people can really see them and know about them. As in all jobs that are happening since COVID, it seems like that there are fewer people to do the work, the fewer people to bid. They're just overwhelmed. And so know that we are getting real good service, and these bids are being put out where they should be. And there is one, this is for site and paving through building and grounds. And it's for, going to go to L.E. Barber of Benton Harbor. And what it is, is paving at the Marion County Courthouse and at the Marion County Jail and overflow. And then there is another one that's going to be through building and grounds, and it's at the historical complex. And what it's going to do is demolish the boardwalk and brick path and install concrete sidewalks. Tom Spitters Concrete LLC Company will do that. We approved our minutes. And I told you about, we have a resolution that's coming next week. I told you about that. I think that's it.
Questions for Finance? All right, Mr. Chair of PHS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel and Human Services Committee met this morning. We had two complement change requests, one from the Health Department and one from Parks. Health Department complement changes, changing from nutritionist budget position to a medical assistant position. Now, they've been unable to recruit for the nutritionist and are able to recruit for medical assistant. This will be a cost savings to the budget of about $28,000 per year. Second was reinstatement of a park operations manager for the Parks Department. This is a position that was in place and then eventually was done away with back in, I think, 2010. And so the recommendation from Parks is to reestablish that. It ends up being budget neutral through cost savings achieved by the department and other areas. So we, committee approved both of those, and we'll be presenting those to you next week. We also had an extensive report from Jill Adams regarding operations at the various parks, and we talked a bit about the new playground equipment at Silver Beach. And so we adjourned prior, because we're very efficient, we adjourned prior to the arrival of our chairman and our administrator. So we did not have the opportunity for their guidance, and so that would conclude my report.
With that in mind, any questions for PHS? All right, Mr. Chair of Admin.
Thank you, Matt. First in to see us this morning was our Health Department Director, Guy Miller, and he talked to us about the Violence Grant that he wants to apply for. We are definitely in favor of it. The one thing that we did ask is that he received support from Benton Harbor City, Harbor Schools, and Benton Charter Township, because this will directly impact those three entities. And this is not a grant that's going to study anything. This is a grant that's going to provide adventure. This is going to be an action grant, and we're excited to see that hopefully come to fruition. Next in to see us was our 911 Director, Kaitlin Sampson, and Commissioner Volrath would like to report out on that.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, Kaitlin was in. Good news, bad news. She's still down about 25% full-time employees, but out of 33, they're staffed with 28, and 25 of those are fully trained. She's got three that apparently they're still in some type of training. Since she was in last, they've hired three new full-time employees and one part-time. And we've got two full-time employee conditional offers right now, so they're working and doing things. One of the things they did trying to attract employees, they had a career in technical education. The dispatchers, they had some folks that went and participated with the high schools in a program countywide. They presented to the public safety pathways for students and for dispatch and law enforcement. And some of that training involves, you know, knowing, you know, where they're headed and why. And we also got an MGU rewarding responders grant, which gave us $2,000 and bought some new headsets for the employees. Good news on the South County, tower's going up, the old tower, they're taking it apart and getting ready to get rid of it. Our new tower will be going up in Buchanan hopefully soon. They've got a few more meetings to take care of, but it's getting really, really close, and we're excited to get this going. It's been a few years. Working on the building and the tower and getting both of them going separately, because they fell apart at one time. But things are looking good again. We know where we're at, and which is a good thing. Three months ago, we couldn't really say that, but now we know where we're at and when we're going to be able to get these things going. And like I say, they closed down the 500 Circle in Buchanan, which is also exciting. They're nowhere near putting employees in there yet. They got some issues with the heat and air conditioning to take care of, because it is a big building. It was built for a lot of employees, and we've got to make it more satisfactory for our employees to make them comfortable before we ask them to move into that building. So we're excited about it, but we're cautious and taking our time and make sure we do it right before we get in there. So that's about it.
Thank you, Dave. Then we had the Chair and Brian in to see us this morning also. Brian brought us up to speed on the efforts of the Public Safety Committee that was put together to study what to do with the Public Safety Milage, and we've pretty much concluded our main mission. We're still going to continue to meet, but we will prepare a written report for the board, so all the commissioners are aware of what our recommendation is. After that, we did resolutions. We have a number of resolutions for you the next time we get together. Resolutions ending in 328, 329, 330, and 331 are all speed studies. And, you know, as things get cleaned up and the law changes, you know, all the areas that were posted 25 is not enforceable. They're trying to get that corrected so that it's enforceable and legal. So these four are for traffic control studies to be done. 28 is Three Oaks Road from Indian Trail Road to Elm Valley Road. 29 is Union Pier Road from South Lock Road to Lakeside Road. 30 is Community Hall Road from Redro Highway to Union Pier Road. And 31 is Prairie Road from Youngren Road to its north end. So those four resolutions before you are for those speed studies to either be done or to be corrected. Resolution ending in 332, this is to receive grant money from the Michigan State Court Administrative Office. This is for the SWIFT Insure Program. We have been awarded $200,000. So this is to accept that amount. Resolution ending in 333, this is also through the Michigan State Court Administrative Office. This is for the Michigan Drug Court Grant Program, and it is to receive $40,000 for that grant. Resolution ending in 334, this is to receive a grant from the Michigan State Court Administrative Office. This is for the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program, and it is to receive $107,000 for that program. Resolution ending in 336, this is for Marion County Animal Control, applied to Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development for a grant in the amount of $8,000 for approximately one month of expenses related to spay and neuter of animals. So that resolution is to apply for that grant, and that is our report.
Questions for Admin? Hearing none, we'll go to Commissioner Reports. Alex, you want to lead us off?
Excuse me one moment.
Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry.
I would like to add, with the Finance Department, that Director of Marion County Health Department, Guy Miller came in to talk with us too, if we had any questions about the grant that they're going to apply for. So I wanted to let you all know that. Thank you.
I would like to remind folks that there is a pancake breakfast this Saturday where Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Elliott and myself will be speaking. And then here is the Marion County Thank a Bet Dinner, still has tickets available for November. That's it.
So yesterday, I attended our Public Safety Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting. And just to echo Commissioner Curran, our Chair, we sort of wrapped up things, our main purpose, but we still will be working with our Administrator to continue the efforts when it comes to recommendations to the full board regarding the Public Safety Milage. Also attended yesterday our Community Corrections Advisory Board Meeting. It was our Chair, Sheriff Bailey's last meeting, so he expressed appreciation for our efforts there. And we sort of wrapped up things for this fiscal year, improving our budget. And then last night, attended our Mental Health Authority Meeting with Commissioner Majerik, and we had presentations on our end goals and our means, and that was very beneficial, talking about adjustments being made based on data collected that staff could use to better service our community regarding mental health. And that is my report.
Since I was last with you, I attended a meeting of the Executive Committee and also the Human Services Council. And then just a reminder, this Friday, ninth graders will, from around the county, will be at a career exploration event at Lake Michigan College. It's, if you really want to come out and see kids get excited about careers, that would be a great opportunity for you. No report.
I also attended the Public Safety Milage Committee Meeting. I attended Southwest Michigan Planning Commission Meeting. If anyone has a project that they would like to see nominated for the Graham Woodhouse Intergovernmental Effort Award, or even any local units of government who are watching this online, have a project that they think may apply. All the requirements and everything is online at the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission website, and I will leave anything else to Commissioners Freeling and Werfel. That's my report.
No report.
Last week after our meeting, we went to the Brownfield Meeting, which pretty much Dan just elaborated more with us on the Brownfield Harbor Shores Project that he talked to us about in the Committee of the Whole last week. We had the Planning Commission, as Jim mentioned. Another item we talked about in there was the Waste Management Agreements. And so that, I chatted with Brian briefly about that this morning, so that's coming forward to us probably in the near future. Public Safety, you've heard enough about today. And then lastly, I'd ask if the Administrator during your report, if you could give us an update on the opioid resolution.
Along with Commissioner Werfel and Freeling, we did have the Brownfield Meeting that she already covered. And last night with Commissioner Bell, we went to the Marion County Health Authority. And good news is we finally have a full board, and they all showed up last night. So everything was good, and that's pretty much it.
Well, you both thoroughly covered the Brownfield Meeting. I was there as well. But then Tuesday, we had the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission Meeting, and, oh, my mic is being there.
Mike, can you hear?
Maybe.
So again, I too attended the Brownfield Meeting, and then Southwest Michigan Planning Commission Meeting. One of the other things that was discussed, we had one of our planners come in, Zane Albright, and some of you may have received emails from him related to the Michigan Infrastructure Office Technical Assistance Program. And so he presented to us, I think, 10 projects for consideration. This is a sort of distillment of a lot of grand ideas that came to the Commission back in April, and they have 10 of those that they've presented. They have opened up the application for a couple more weeks in case there were any other ideas that needed to come in. I think that deadline is November 8th, and then the Planning Commission will look at all of those projects. And Brian, I think I gave you the list of those, things like Smart Grid for southwestern region of Michigan, standing on trails throughout our area as well as connecting to other states. There are a lot of really big ideas that they will consider, and then what will happen is it will go to the state for applying for this technical assistance grant and potentially even going as high as a federal level for an additional funding grant. More to come on that. Another thing that was discussed was also the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission is working on creating a regional electric vehicle readiness plan, and Thaddeus, I thought of you, so you know where to charge up. And so that will be something that will be coming to the Planning Commission to review, but it'll also be a resource that will be available for communities to look at in their planning on the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission's website. That is my report, sir.
I have no report.
Yeah, to follow up on Commissioner's question related to the Task Force Recommendation, we had planned to get a draft resolution in front of PHS today. We delayed that because of Violence Mitigation Resolution and work that was occurring. We will have the Task Force Recommendation. I hope to have it. We will have the Task Force recommendation. I hope to have it in front of PHS as early as next week. We're not dragging feet. We just had to do a bit of shuffling.
Okay, we'll now go to general public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to say. Up to two minutes. Name in town, name in town. Microphone is up at the podium. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Schnabel. I'm from the village of Shoreham. A couple meetings ago, I was here expressing some concerns over the violence in this community, and I want to thank the commissioners for approving the Community Violence Intervention, Intervention Grant Application. The time I spoke before, and I still have that same concern, that I don't believe this county can move forward with the increased violence that we're experiencing. So any, any efforts we can make to dissolve issues or disputes in a peaceful manner without resorting to violence, I think is going to help all the business and the citizens. So again, thank the commissioners for approving it.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Pelzer? Yeah, I was going to say, take those off first.
Pelzer, Hager Township. Hey, Dave Work. You guys better be careful. I hear everything you say. Okay, I want to make a comment on Senior Center, you know, the way you guys are distributing the money. I don't think it's fair, because I just came from St. Joe Township down there, Lincoln Center. Their population, their service area is about 40,000 people out of 151,000, so it's about 26%. And the way this money is divided up, you got it by, divided by seven, whatever comes in. So everybody gets in 379,000 bucks. Well, we got 27, 26% of the population uses that, actually, it's more than that. A lot of people from out of town, from out of the district or area, you know, they just go there because they have more, more programs. So what I'm saying is, it should be about 700 and 600 and some thousand bucks if we were to go by the percentages. But the way, the way you got it set up, you take the money that comes in, divide it by seven, everybody gets the same. That's not right. So I suggest maybe you guys come up with some kind of a, some kind of a formula or something. No, divided, don't divide it by the population, and then see which one, which, how many people are being serviced in that area, and then just multiply by that. What's the big deal? No, Marion Springs, they get to, they probably got 10,000 people. There are 15. We got 40. We're getting the same amount of money. Of course, then again, you know, you got more rich people living out there, and they cough up quite a few money, quite a few bucks to buy all this stuff. Look at the building.
Two minutes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pelzer. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, general public, comments are closed. We'll move to other business. I am wondering if anyone have any? It came to my attention that we missed something last week. Someone had a birthday. So if you'd like to, if you'd like to join me, we can wish our colleague happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jim. Happy birthday to you. Yay.
Oh, Nargiu. A voice making solos.
You can bring food.
I hit one of those milestones, maybe, on 70.
Donuts next week are always welcome, so. Yes. Ryzen roll is quite good, as I understand. So just saying. Anybody have any other, other business? Yes, sir. Yes. Makes all the difference. Announcements and reminders. Anybody have any? Okay, other than coming back into open session, potentially to approve the resolution of pending litigation or authorize the steps to resolve pending litigation, we're done for the day. But we do need to go into closed session under the attorney-client privilege because of an update on pending litigation. And if there's a motion and support to do that, we'll do a roll call, and then we'll need to clear the chamber. Moved by Ah is their support, supported by Volrath. Any discussion? All right, and this is again to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation under the attorney-client privilege. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, please call the roll.